And we would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call shows all are present, including a few extras. And so we're all set there. And we need to review the minutes of October 26, 2015.
I have one change.
I'll move the minutes.
Harvey has something?
Yep, please. On page five, second last line, talking about state, this is a fee for an administrative fee, the second fee should be struck and service should be inserted there. Fee for an administrative service. Thank you.
Remove the minutes as amended. I'll second.
Okay, for the discussion, if you are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, now we can move to approval of the bills.
I had a couple. The heater for the water tower radio, is that, do you hope that that will end up being the solution to the interference issues?
One of, yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, that was part of what we discovered last year. So, yeah, that's, we've also, the company's never claimed to turn their transmitter back on, so that's been kind of an interesting thing, too. But the interference does have seemed to have decreased, so.
Now, was there a circuit up there for that already, or did we have to run a circuit up?
No, but there's plenty of amp bridge, yeah, that wasn't a problem. It's just, it's an industrial-grade radiant heater is all we put in there, so.
Yeah, I just wondered, I mean, sometimes inherently you get interference from that kind of activity in a radio system, so.
Yep, seems to be working.
All right, thank you. I had one more. The refund for 546 North Lafayette on page two of the register, it's like thirteen thousand four hundred and seven.
That was for an MTT case.
For what?
Michigan Tax Tribunal.
Okay. What is that property, do you know? Okay, well, I mean, I'll come in during the week, if you could look that up, I'd appreciate that. Thank you, that's all I had.
I'll move the bills.
I'll second.
Okay. For the discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, before we move on to certification of election, I would like to insert some, a couple of short farewells here. Erin?
Thanks Ted. I would like to thank everybody who supported me for the last ten years. No pictures, Ryan. You know, I don't like my picture taken. Over ten years, you should have learned that by now. So, I do want to thank everybody who supported me over the ten years. I learned a lot being on a council, and I found it a very interesting experience, and I think it's about to get a lot more interesting. Mike, Harvey, Glenn, enjoy your new council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Bev?
Well, I've enjoyed working on the city council for the past four years and being part of this great little town. I want to thank all who supported me. I enjoyed working with all you guys. And I just hope that the new city council will follow through for the seniors in Colonial Lakers Phase Four with their dedication of our water mines, veins, and fire hydrants in the near future. Thank you all.
I'm going to beat my drum for a moment here. Some of the things I've accomplished in South Lyon, and I'm kind of proud of. I was fifteen years a coach, or an umpire, or again, a coach of flag football, and baseball, and so forth. I was twenty-six years a employee of the South Lyon School System, as a teacher, and also a janitor. I used to swap twenty-one toilets a night for four years while I earned my college degree. So I started at the bottom. Thirty-one years of cable TV, over three hundred and two football games, over ninety parades, Easter egg hunts, candy canes, Pumpkin Fest festivals, that I made sure we're on television, get all our kids' faces on. In fact, I was one of the original twelve that started Pumpkin Fest in nineteen eighty-five. Thirty-three years a member and charter member of the Lions Club, the Leader Dog Group, and over a third of my life on council, twenty-three years, ten as mayor. And I want to say thank you, and yes, I have no regrets. Thank you very much.
Okay, we did have a general election on November 3rd. There was about a twenty percent turnout, which was pretty, pretty good for a small election. And we do have some new members of council, and a new mayor that I need to swear in. So, if John Gallas would like to come down. I swear you in.
Aye, John Gallas, Jr. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution of this State. And the Constitution of this State. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. And I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of Mayor. Of the Mayor. For the city of South Lyon. For the city of South Lyon. According to the best of my abilities. According to the best of my abilities. Thank you. Good job Ted.
Yeah.
So, I swear you in it. That I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution of this State. And the Constitution of this State. And I will faithfully discharge the duties. And I will faithfully discharge the duties. A council member. A council member. For the city of South Lyon. For the city of South Lyon. According to the best of my abilities. According to the best of my abilities. Twenty percent, that's pretty good. Twenty percent turnout. It is good. I'm interested to see the breakdowns. She doesn't want to miss this table. I am Margaret Kurzweil. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution of this State. And the Constitution of this State. And I will faithfully discharge the duties. And I will faithfully discharge the duties. A council member. A council member. For the city of South Lyon. For the city of South Lyon. According to the best of my abilities. According to the best of my abilities. Congratulations, congratulations. Nice serving. Congratulations.
No, that's fine, I understand.
Hey, congratulations, congratulations.
Thanks Ted.
Congratulations again.
So I think I want to say something before Mayor Wallace gets away, maybe he already did. I want to thank him for so many years of his service for this city community. Our children were all raised pretty much somewhere along the line by him, either like football games, or teaching at the school, or just the amount of effort he's put in, in this town is commendable. And I'm honored to follow in line with the mayors that have been here, and just hope to do, you know, as best I can to follow in their footsteps, and like I said before, what's next for South Lyon, and I really truly mean that. He's going to be missed, and it's going to be a change, and I'm looking forward to this. So, I want to thank Ted, and I think everybody also should, too, because he has spent a greater part of his life doing something for this city, so I want to say thank you. So I guess I want to, no, if there's any additions or subtractions to the agenda tonight?
No, we have the agenda as presented.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll support.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any public comments that anybody would like to address that's not on the agenda this evening? Please state your name and address.
Greetings, council. For those that you don't know me, Mrs. Dadas met me, and of course Maggie knows me. My name's Carl Richards, 390 Lennox, okay? I want to extend my congratulations to all the candidates that participated, and I hope South Lyon is benefited in the long run by what we're about to embark on in the future here. For, just a replay, I'm an activist and a community supporter, and I plan to stay the course, okay? And I have a lot of unfinished items on my agenda that I plan to keep working on, and put in quite a lot of time on a few things, as we've all known. There's some new ideas that will be coming your way, I just want to, I'm going to take just five minutes, I'm going to keep it at five, okay? In the future, we're going to need a better working relationship with Lyon Township, okay? There has never been an officer of a liaison, okay, with the township, or the Tube Mill, or Green Oak, or Salem, and in the future, we're going to have to embark on that, or embrace that more closely. As I said, and there's things that go on in the township I don't particularly like, but we can't really do much about it, but we should be more closely aware of it, that will be impacting us in the future. And I'm just mentioning this for, I talk futuristic much of the time when I make an There are many changes, hopefully they will come nearer than further, okay, for us. Also, to move on, my resignation from the Cable Commission has never been fully accepted by council, and I hope that can come on the agenda for smooth transition of the Cable Commission to, and I helped to find a new person to replace me. I was never, at this point in time, at the Cable Commission is at, I'm not the right fit going forward. Somebody with a little more capability than I have will fit in better, and I hope to be able to fit into one of the other commissions that have a number of vacancies, okay? For instance, Parks and Recs, or ZVA, if possible, I'd like to fit into something that would be good for me, good marriage. New issues that may come to the forefront with you in the future here may have to do with physical health and mental health, okay? As we're going forward, and having been there many times myself, and seeing a cardiologist at this time, you know, we have to do this with compassion and understanding with, with all of our people affected. New concepts are going to be necessary to meet new challenges and new disasters that will undoubtedly be coming our way. There are several things in the pipeline right now that you don't know anything about, okay? And one of them is going to be more of a pickle, let's put it that way, than what we have on Mill Street, one of my favorites. And it's wonderful, I'm so happy to see Parks and Recs here tonight. They've been wanting to get to the council meeting for a long time, and I'm very supportive of them. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Steve Brummer, 714 Castro Ridge Drive. Most of you know me, actually all of you, I think you do. Been on the school board for six years. I wanted to congratulate our new council members, returning council member. I also want to thank the council members that just left us. All of you heard the call to serve, and that's what public office is. It's not public, you know, it's not self-service, it's public service, and everyone that goes up there goes with the best of intentions. They do the job to the best of their abilities, according to their oath, and the public owes a debt of gratitude to that. So thank you very much for that. I also want to just thank you also for working on the safe routes to school. I know it's old business, and I'm not supposed to talk about it, so I'm not going to, but thank you, we appreciate your collaboration on that. I do would like, I'd like to stress a couple of things real quick. I've talked with a couple individuals already about this, I'd like to speak further with Mr. Riddell, Mr. Kivell, Mr. Dadas, or Mr. Kramer, if you'd like, but the process with the city council, I think, I know we did a little overhaul on the school board, and it's helped us run very efficiently. We are able to field public comments a lot better, but most of all, we've developed a team, and we're working together as a team. We've been having study sessions once, twice a month, going over just a single issue, if need be. For example, when it was time to do our superintendent evaluations, we met a couple times. One study session was about what goals we had for Ms. Baker. The next one was, you know, we went back and we spoke with Ms. Baker, you know, what goals does she have? Did they mesh? Did it mesh with our vision? And then what did success look like for her? These study sessions really helped us understand where our priorities were at as board members, helped us understand her priorities as a superintendent, and it really helped build a team. Going through issues for one hour, it is obviously in a public meeting, it's in a study session, it helped each of us understand our logic, our way of thinking, and we had a deeper respect for one another, even though we may not have agreed with them, we understood where they were coming from. And it was because they cared about the kids, or about the community, as much as the other person did. So I just would like you guys to think about that, and hosting study sessions, it will help lead to more transparency, it'll help lead to building a team. This community is hoping that you guys, they're counting on you guys to work together as a team, because that's the only way progress is going to get made here. So, and we all know we need, we need that. So I appreciate everyone's service, I appreciate your time. Good luck, and thank you.
Ryan Lehrer, Simmons, and Sings from Gray Court. I wanted to congratulate Maggie, John, Joe, and Mary to council, and I also want to thank my dear friend Ted for serving so long as council and mayor, and for Erin and Bev as well. It's not easy to be a public servant and stand up here and take it when you vote on something that doesn't go the right way, or the way you're expecting it to go, and they worked, you know, every, twice a week, you know, or twice a month at least, a council working to, even on the sidelines, to do, you know, like Ted said, do the games and everything, and, you know, Ted gave his whole life to this city, and it's, just wanted to say thanks.
Any more comments? Okay, then, so we'll get started. It's some old business. Number one on the list is to consider the approval of funding for the city's portion of the traffic signal at Pontiac Trail in Marjorie Anne, due to possible delays in the safe routes funding until 2017.
I brought Leslie Zawada from CES. Who's been doing engineering together.
Thanks, Mike.
Good evening. As Lynn mentioned, my name's Leslie Zawada, I'm president and owner of Civil Engineering Solutions, and I work for Lyon Township, I'm their consulting engineer, and I have been working on the Safe Routes to Schools project, so thank you for having me tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and give an overview of the project for all of the new council members, as well as for the audience, and then answer any questions you may have regarding the cost estimate. So I do have some maps to pass out to you, and some cost estimates, if that's okay? Some revised cost estimates since your last meeting.
Are these the numbers that are in our packet?
No.
No, these are new. So there's the cost estimate, updated cost estimate in a map, and I'll just go over the initial work areas, as well as what is currently included in the grant application. I'm not sure, oh, I'm sorry. I'm not sure how many of you are aware of how long we've been working on this, but over the last, I would say eight to ten months, we have been meeting regularly, we, meaning myself, Chris Duzen from McKenna and Associates, he's a township planner, with your city manager, Lynn Ladner, as well as the school district, and the road commission for Oakland County. And this is really an example of four different government agencies working together to fund a project to improve safety for children that live both in the city of South Lyon, as well as Lyon Township. So I'm really excited about this project. It's going to improve safety around the three schools, and it affects potentially eighteen hundred students that are residents in the city and the township. So just to give a background, the initial work areas that we were focused on, we received significant comment from the public about the need for a signal at Marjorie Anne and Pontiac Trail. But doing the research through the grant process, a full traffic signal is not grant-eligible. But it was that important to the city and the township and the school district that we met with, when we were meeting through this process, that it was something that we still wanted to include for the proposed improvements. The road commission for Oakland County has volunteered to pay a third of the construction cost if they install the signal, which was really quite generous considering their diminishing budget. Now, going through the project, so as I mentioned, the signal was included in the initial, and we had originally proposed sidewalks along Marjorie Anne, Valerie, and Lilian. But that existing subdivision has open ditches, and in order to facilitate sidewalk, those open ditches would have to be enclosed with storm sewer, and then construct the sidewalk, and it turned out to be very expensive to do all three streets. So during the course of the last many months, we revised the scope of the project, and another concern was that the city wanted more improvements within the city limits, and we understood that. So the current grant application looks considerably different from the very early stages of the meeting. We're still including the signal, as I mentioned, it's not grant-eligible, but it's part of the overall project. We're including the sidewalks along Marjorie Anne, improvements to the Nine Mile intersection, two crosswalks along Nine Mile, improvements along Princeton, as well as a pedestrian bridge over the Sayer Drain, to facilitate pedestrian traffic to millennial and centennial schools. So that's overall the map. It's somewhat hard to see, but I'm happy to answer any questions of council or the audience on the exact locations. And we've broken down the cost estimates so that the areas that are within the township limit, the city is not paying for. And the areas that are within the city limits, the township isn't paying for. And consistently through the estimate, the school is paying for one-third, if that makes sense. I'm going to grab my, I'm going to grab my notes over here.
Maggie?
Yes, I just noticed, I noticed this, and maybe you can give me a little bit of background. I noticed that on the original plan, the grant-eligible was roughly 146, and now we have a grant-eligible of 254. That's a pretty big jump. Did the, did the grant itself increase with respect to eligible funding, or what happened with this large jump? If you look down there, it says construction total, grant-eligible 146 on the original, and now I see a grant-eligible for 254.
Do you know the date of your estimate?
No, I don't.
The, you know, I can't comment on that exactly.
Maybe comment on the 254.
I can comment in the change. Actually, currently, the grant-eligible is 458,000.
Oh, really?
Yes. Total improvements are 827,000, and I can give you a summary of, for the audience as well. So the total project improvements, which includes a $150,000 signal at Marjorie Anne and Pontiac Trail, it includes a pedestrian bridge, it includes all of the items I summary, I summarized in what is included in the grant application. And according to this, the grant-eligible is $458,000. The township match would be just under 120,000. The city match is just above 92,000, and the schools match is at 106,000 approximately. And the road commission would be contributing 50,000, which is a third of the inner, the signal, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And just to give a little more information on the Safe Routes to Schools program, it's a really wonderful program that is funded through MDOT and through the federal government, and it allows the improvements of pedestrian walkways, sidewalks particularly, within a one-mile distance of K through eight schools. And since there are three schools that are within this area, we were, we were able to add more project that is grant-eligible than you would if it was just one school. You would be limited to $200,000, if there was only one school.
And I apologize, councilwoman, the numbers that you had in your packet was missing a third sheet that would have had the final grant numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
And so our next step with this, just to give an update on the schedule, would be to start the signal design, which would be completed by Parsons Brinkerhoff, and they are an MDOT pre-qualified signal traffic engineer. And what, the plan for the construction of the signal would be done in 2016. Now, there, some information about this, there are some improvements that are needed at that intersection for crosswalks. Our plan is to submit the entire grade inspection package to MDOT in December, if we can make that deadline. We do need some information from the Department of Environmental Quality. If we can get that, we'd like to submit our grade inspection package. From that time, if everything is acceptable on the plans, it's a potential bid letting of May of 2016. So it's possible that these improvements could be constructed in 2016, but there's also a funding portion, and if the funds are used up before that, then it moves to 17 automatically, unless we want to do an advanced construct and be reimbursed the following year. And so that's a summary, we had a conference call with MDOT today, and we went through those dates. So it is possible that the, that all of the construction would be done in 2016, but all of the agencies feel strongly that at least the signal should be installed. you would if it was just one school. You would be limited to $200,000 if there was only one school.
And I apologize, councilwoman. The numbers that you had in your packet was missing a third sheet that would have had the final grant numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. And so, our next step with this, just to give an update on the schedule, would be to start the signal design, which would be completed by Parsons Brinkeroff, and they are an MDOT pre-qualified signal traffic engineer. And what, the plan for the construction of the signal would be done in 2016. Now, there, some information about this, there are some improvements that are needed at that intersection for crosswalks. Our plan is to submit the entire grade inspection package to MDOT in December, if we can make that deadline. We do need some information from the Department of Environmental Quality. If we can get that, we'd like to submit our grade inspection package. From that time, if everything is acceptable on the plans, it's a potential bid letting in May of 2016. So, it's possible that these improvements could be constructed in 2016, but there's also a funding portion. And if the funds are used up before that, then it moves to 17 automatically unless we want to do an advanced construct and be reimbursed the following year. And so, that's a summary. We had a conference call with MDOT today, and we went through those dates. So, it is possible that the, that all of the construction would be done in 2016, but all of the agencies feel strongly that at least the signal should be installed.
So, what are you asking for us, I mean, you asking us for to improve the entire grant amount today? I mean, not the grant amount, the city match, day of the 92,000? Or just for the?
This is the signal.
Just for the signal. So, are you looking at 33, 333 plus the 29?
Well, you've authorized and budgeted the 92 in the past when we put together the 2015, 2016 budget. You authorized the grant amount. So, what we're asking for is authorization to go ahead and move forward with potentially, with doing the design and funding for the...
Signal.
Signal. It was in the monies that we were setting aside for, it was in the engineering money that we put in the budget for 2015, 2016, as well as construction funds.
Well, I understand that, but are we then, because I'm looking at the agenda note, it says authorize the engineering and construction expenses. I just want to make sure. Are we talking, referring to the 33,000 and the 29? Are we, I'm just looking at our agenda note, it says where it says authorize the construction expenses and the engineering expenses.
I had, I had thought that the city had approved the, the match already, and, but preparing for this meeting, it sounds really that it's an authorization to move forward with completion of the signal design. But once we submit the grade inspection package, you're committing to funding your portion.
No, I understand that, but if we're gonna, if we're moving ahead with the traffic signal, which is not eligible for the grant money.
Yes, that's correct.
I'm just trying to get an idea what we're authorizing as far as, I understand, we're trying to decide if we're going to agree to go ahead with our portion of the, I just want to know how much. Are we looking at the 33 plus the 29?
I, I would suggest that if you are in support of the entire project to authorize the city match, so that we can proceed with submitting the grade inspection, which would be submitted through the city.
So, the city match then would be 92,304.20.
Yes.
And that would be for the whole project?
The whole project.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd like to follow up on Mike's comment.
Sure.
The original material, spreadsheet that came with our agenda notes, had the city paying in the area 58,084 in some sense. And now, now we're looking at...
That was just for the, that was just for the signal.
That was just for the signal, yeah. And, and included the engineering.
I think Princeton's on this.
So, yeah, and so now you're, now we've added the, the whole rest of the project. Is that correct? I mean, it's a significant difference in money.
It is a significant difference, and if the council is not prepared to make that decision tonight, we would, should add this to a future agenda before the grade inspection package is submitted, if you're uncomfortable making the decision for the entire amount.
But it is my understanding, we, I've brought the entire grant application and the funding and what those proposed eligible costs were to the council before, and you've authorized moving forward with the grant with those funding amounts.
Right, but this is outside, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
This is outside of the grant, so the big push tonight was to, for us to approve the funding for the traffic signal.
For the non-eligible.
Right.
I see.
So, we can, I, I just want to make sure that I'm clear then. We can, in theory, vote to approve the signal based on the construction costs and the city's portion of the match, right, which is 33,000. I'm just trying to get a sense of what we're actually voting on. Are we voting on going ahead with the traffic signal, our portion of the cost for the traffic signal and the engineering?
You can do either. You, you can re-vote to, because the numbers have changed recently, and re-authorize the total amount of 92,000 because they have changed since the original authorization. And then, none of the funding has to come back before the council. It will include the signal and all of the engineering for the full package with the signal in it. Or you can authorize just the signal at this time, and then we would move forward with, at a later date, authorizing the rest of the grant application funding.
First off, when do you anticipate having some conceptual design drawings?
We're already, as far as the other improvements besides the signal, we're approximately at 70% already.
Okay. When for the signal?
For the signal, we'll take approximately two months.
Okay. I'm, I'm a little bit apprehensive about moving forward without some understanding of exactly what the impact of that site is going to be. There's virtually nothing gleaned from looking at photographs that just simply say this is where a signal's going. I had thought that there would be a lot more comprehensive understanding of, is there a passing lane? Is it a left-turn lane? What all is going into that improvement?
It's just a signal.
Okay, so...
There's no road improvements included.
Which leads me to how, how the original numbers had been extrapolated from the idea that the city was going to pay, I think it was like $11,000 or something in engineering in the first go-around, when essentially, there's no improvement taking place on the city side. I, I'm not tracking how that was possible. I see that everything is kind of been remorfed so that everyone's taking an equal share of the signal and throughout the entire comprehensive cost, which I think is appropriate. I mean, we all bought into the idea. I don't think that there's any amendments that are taking place in this signal crossing that are going to be improvements that are outside of the scope of directly involved with the signal. They're not in the grander package at all. So, those costs being shared equally make perfect sense. But I, I don't like the idea of the bigger picture, the idea of the bridge. There's just a, a number of, of things that I would like a great deal more understanding about how this is going to be pulled off than the information we've been provided to date.
Do you want a copy of the plans that have been generated to date?
I'd ask for that, actually, but yeah, I would like to see that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can, I'm not sure what the, I have a small copy with me, or I can submit them to...
I would like to have, City Hall just have a set of drawings, actually, if we could. Then we can, at our leisure, come by and everyone can kind of take a look at it when they, they'd like to, when it's convenient.
Okay.
I don't want to have all of us have a full scope of...
Whatever the appropriate way to communicate, I can certainly send that to you. I can send it individually via email, and we can drop off full-size sets of plans, whatever works for you. The only thing that won't be included is the signal itself, the controls and those drawings, because that design work has not begun.
Well, and in the event that, that what you're saying is accurate, if there's no improvements to that section of the road, there's not an awful lot to be illuminated by drawings.
Exactly.
So, I mean, knowing where the control box is going to be isn't going to change anyone's concerns about where these costs lie. And since the costs are actually, have been re-morfed into being equal, I don't have any opposition to us moving forward with, with that approval myself. But I'm, I'm not, I'm not prepared to act on the rest of the project at this time.
Right, so it's just limited to the signal itself?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, I am, thanks.
Joe?
So, I just want to say, I'm, I'm all for this project. I, I was, I think this is great to improve the safety and no hesitation on my side. Just a couple of questions, and I apologize if it's already on the sheet, but how much have we actually spent so far going, invested in engineering fees and actually spent to date?
My firm, we have expended approximately $30,000 of effort, and I'm not sure how much the planning consultant has, because there have been so many meetings and plan applications and survey, and our plans are pretty detailed, actually, at this point. I don't know the total number, though, with the planning consultant as well as myself. I can tell you just from my invoices where we're at.
Yeah, and the reason why I ask is because too often we see that projects move forward, and you put so much money into it, and then all of a sudden people get pulled feet, and then it's almost a waste of money, and I'd hate to see that happen. So, just want to get a sense for that. Also, was curious, I did not have a chance to follow up with anybody from Lyon Township, but I understand they recently had a meeting. Did they give similar approval, or?
They've authorized the project and they've budgeted for it. With the change in the estimate, I discussed it with the township supervisor, and he did not have a concern.
Okay.
So, he hasn't formally gone back to their board. But I don't anticipate an issue.
Thank you.
Um, yes. Earlier, you had stated that the commission's paying a third of the traffic signal. I just want to clarify, is that just the traffic signal?
The road commission, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I guess I'll make the motion then. Oh, sure.
I, I had a question on the city match, that's 92,000, and, or somewhere around there. And I'm sort of hearing that the numbers sort of shifted a little bit from the beginning to where we're at. This 92 that we're working with now, is that a pretty firm fixed number? Or do you anticipate any other adjustments to that number? And if so, I'm sorry, Leslie, but, yeah.
Well, it is an estimate.
What are our chances of that moving up and by how much?
Okay. Let me explain how we, we came to the unit prices, okay? Because I do not like to estimate low. Okay? I don't like coming back and saying, "We missed $10,000" or whatever. But, so what I did is I took an MDOT bid letting from last year, and they have numerous bid lettings throughout the year. And I averaged unit prices for each item. I've submitted it to your engineer for review, as well as the city's facilities department for review, and they both provided feedback. And those are the unit price numbers that we used. But it is an estimate, and it will be, the final cost will be based on actual bid letting costs.
Okay. So, based on your experience, you know, are we looking at, is this number bid, this number, this estimate that you've provided, is this a little bit on the high side? Is this in the middle of the road? Is this conservative?
I would say it's slightly conservative.
Okay.
But it's, I, it's estimating construction is difficult because it's market value, and it just depends. If concrete shortage is even worse next year, the concrete prices will go up. But I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. So, there could be a little bit of movement in this 92?
Yes.
But, but 92 is kind of a basic good estimate?
Yes.
Okay.
And one of the main reasons why the numbers have shifted dramatically is, in the original plan was, not only was Marjorie Anne, but Lillian and...
Valerie.
Valerie were all going to have sidewalks and new storm drains. That would have shifted almost all of the grant work and grant-eligible work and everything to just the neighborhood by the Sayre Elementary and none of the work by the elementaries, as well as the majority of the work being in the township. It was my recommendation that we try to be more even and divide the grant to where work was being done for all three schools. And so, that's why some of the numbers changed dramatically from our original project.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other comments?
No, I guess not.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm gonna make the motion then, just to authorize the engineering and construction expenses for the city's portion of the traffic signal related to the Safe Routes to School grant. And then, well, that's the motion, and then, in further discussion, I'll go on.
I'll second that. Go ahead, Maggie.
Second.
I did have one more question. The, okay, you suggested that this might be put together so we could submit in spring?
No.
Or, excuse me, to a, a bid package that could go out in spring.
Yes. The way it works through MDOT projects is you submit what's called a grade inspection package. It, you, it's your grant application, it's 80% complete plans that you submit with the application. And for us to have a spring, spring bid let, we need to submit in December. And we still are missing one piece of this to be able to do that, that's somewhat, that could be a delay. Not a significant delay, but we found out today that they want us to have a preliminary letter from Department of Environmental Quality, because we're crossing the Sayre Drain. And that was new, that we found out today. But my goal is to submit December 14th. But in order to do that, I would like to be on a future agenda between now and December 14th, so you can evaluate the numbers, have time to look at the plans, become more comfortable with the project, so we can move forward.
But you had also suggested that the, the expenditures, I mean, they'll be grabbed up early. Is, is there a promise that, have you gotten any field back from, from the state as to what the level of priority our package would be?
Our pri, our priority of package, honestly, I think it's more of a first-come, first-serve. So, if other communities have their applications in first and they're eligible, they'll get the money. And there's only a certain amount of money each year, and if you make it in time, you're funded for that year. And if you're not, then you're funded in the following year.
So, there's not a board that actually does an assessment of the impact of benefit to that community or anything?
That, my understanding with Safe Routes, they're pretty much all funded.
Okay.
If they meet your, the criteria. It's different than the TAP program, which is to extend pathways. That, I think, is more on a scoring basis. But for this type of program, that's my understanding, you'll get the funding. It's just which year will you get it.
Harvey? Thank you. I'm going to support this motion, because what we had before us at our last meeting, and again at this meeting in the agenda, was the construction of the engineering and construction of the traffic signal. And tho, and those numbers caused us significant pain as we looked at them. And now that, now that you've come back with numbers that are more realistic in our view, I'd like a little more time to look at the rest of the package.
Sure.
Before we vote on that. And so, I'm not, not in favor of the rest of the package, but I'd like the time to, to review it.
I completely understand.
We have a motion, and we have a support. Any more comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those against?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So, we can expect something on maybe the next agenda about the rest of the package, or?
I'll coordinate.
Not next agenda, maybe in December.
Probably December. I think she has a planning commission for Lyon Township on our next council meeting.
We'll coordinate the schedule, so I can be here.
Some significant language, maybe, that we don't, so we don't get caught up in any potential delays.
We'll, we'll try to plan for a November meeting, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Number two, an old business. Considering adopting a new athletic field court use application and permit policy and procedures, and set administrative fees for processing use permit applications.
Okay, this was brought before the council at the last meeting. The council had several questions and asked for modifications to the policies and procedures and to the permit application. The Parks and Rec Commission was able to have a special meeting, take all of the questions and concerns of the council's advisement, as well as do the due diligence research as to whether the DNR would allow us to charge any fees for the use of fields at Volunteer Park. And it is permissible. I provided you, I believe, the email from the DNR that states that that is possible, as well as copies of both the previous version you had last time, as well as the new versions with the sections highlighted, which, at least my copy does not really show very well. But we have members of the Parks and Rec Commission here to answer your questions and to explain the revisions, and hopefully get your approval so that we can move forward with this.
I mean, the summary is, there's only one section that really made a difference, so I think we're all going to be satisfied with the way that worked out.
Yeah. Basically, the, the revisions that we made were to clarify that individuals could reserve the parks or court without incurring the $25 fee, and that the fee applied more to the large group reservations, like the soccer club, the junior league, et cetera. And, because there's a lot more work involved on Amy's end in going through those reservations and comparing, because they all want the same fields at the same time. So, the, the things that actually changed, there were three major changes. I don't know if the highlights came through. Nothing changed on the permit application itself. These were all changes on the procedure and the policy. On the first page, the fourth bullet point was changed. On the first page, the fourth bullet point was changed where it said, "Applications for permits for multiple dates." So that's the line that refers to the groups that are reserving the fields for, you know, all summer long, et cetera. And that is subject to a twenty-five dollar non-refundable application fee. That was the major change there. So that kind of exempts the individual use requests from the twenty-five dollar fee. And then on the second page, there was a statement that was at the beginning of the paragraph. We moved it to the end and it says, "The city athletic fields and courts are public property." And then we added the sentence, "Any unreserved fields or courts are available to the public on a first come, first served basis." So if somebody wanted to schedule a family picnic, they call up Amy's SLARA organization, find out if the park or the field is available. If it is, first come, first served, they get to reserve it. Then the last item was to add another group to the list of group there. The original groups had individuals listed on type three. It had private individuals grouped in with South Lion profit businesses, organizations, activities. That was where one of the questions came in. We separated private individuals out. They became their own category, type three. And then we moved South Lion for-profit businesses, organizations, activities to category four. And then the original category five, which was non-South Lion groups, moved down to category five. So hopefully those were the changes that you needed to meet your needs and this can be approved.
John?
Comments by anybody? Would like to start talking about this here? This is dear to my heart a little bit because I'm a big time sports guy from way back and I know this always causes hiccups a little bit at times with who's got the field and when. And so it's nice to see that we're trying to address that upfront because we're growing so fast that it's gonna be very, very difficult to enforce, you know, without some kind of language that allows us to do this. So I'm just glad we're doing it.
All right, I have one question, Jen. I'm sorry, go ahead, Meg. No, go ahead.
You know, unfortunately, I, I read the minutes from the last meeting and so I wasn't able to discern from those minutes, you know, some of the questions. So that's what I'm gonna ask him. How much revenue are you expected to generate on this?
By an annual basis, most likely seventy-five to a hundred dollars.
Seventy-five to a hundred dollars, okay. I, I'm just one of those people that, I'm not saying I'm against user or administrative fees. I just have to receive, I, I, for me personally, I spoke to a lot of parents over the weekend that have their children in sports in some of these leagues and they're spending a lot of money, you know, to pay for their kids' cleats, their kids' baseball bats, you know, the helmets, the, the uniforms, the membership into the organization. And, and I, I think this is kind of one of those goodwill kind of things. If all you're gaining is seventy-five to a hundred dollars, I think the goodwill is, I guess I don't understand why it's being charged, but, you know, I understand, I suppose. I did see in the minutes that one of the issues was regarding scheduling for the fields. Have you looked into any computerized scheduling? A lot of people haven't.
Currently, we don't utilize one. I haven't investigated that yet. As the director of SLARA, we still don't know for sure that we're going to be doing this moving forward until all this is approved. So we haven't made that investment investigating computer options.
You know, I, I, I'm just giving a suggestion.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I mean, I would almost rather table this for money and have you update your technology over there and get, get with a computerized scheduling program. CADTERRA, C-A-D-T-E-R-R-A, is a software field management program brokers. And what they do is they will span one hundred and fifty or two hundred field management software programs that will find one that fit your, your needs. I think if you get into some sort of computerized online scheduling is that you have some, some benefits. Let's look at the benefits. Number one, you, you deal with the, the issue of scheduling. It relieves your time because now people can actually go onto the system and schedule and you can set new policies for that. I think what you do is you also become more consumer friendly. You know, you have an opportunity now where these individuals who are with these programs can now go up onto a computerized schedule, look and see what's available. And, and I think that you're just moving into the twenty-first century, quite frankly. You know, if you look into some computerized programs. I would be an advocate to have the city and you're, you sit on, on a board or you work for a board with three communities. If, if that software ends up being fifteen, eighteen, twenty-five hundred dollars, I would be a strong advocate that South Lion kick in their one-third share to give you some updated technology so that we can improve the efficiency over there, relieve the problems that you're having in managing all of the scheduling and I think become a little bit more consumer friendly and work on the delivery, delivery of your services to the actual consumer and taxpayer. So, for what it's worth.
That's what I did.
Thank you.
Mike?
I, I think, and it's my understanding, that the purpose behind just the twenty-five dollar user fee in general was the amount of time that you, it takes to select multiple dates for, say, the junior league. When they're scheduling multiple fields over multiple dates and multiple times and it comes down to taking up your time doing that. And that's why you're only looking at maybe seventy-five to a hundred dollars a year. The rest, I mean, everything else is pretty straightforward. They come in, if they want to do an application and they just fill it out. But I think it's more tailored towards just those individuals. I agree, a computer program would be great for the individuals, but I, I don't know. I think that's where the issue came with the user fee.
Right, and then part of it too is, what Amy said was happening is, often the applications were changed throughout the year, multiple times. So the application fee and then the extra fees for revisions are an attempt to encourage people to submit the most accurate reservations as possible the first time because it's more difficult, as the year goes on, to start making changes when people keep submitting field request changes.
Right, and this is for the, the larger organizations, right?
Larger groups, correct.
I don't, thank you. Joe?
So I've, I think this is, as a basis, as a, as a whole, this is good, that we have some sort of a policy. Because I've spoken to a lot of sports organizations and I feel the difficulty it is to get the, to get the right fields and, and scheduling. I imagine it's a logistics nightmare. So I, I think it's good that we have a policy in place. What I take little exception with is, especially when I hear it's only seventy-five dollars to a hundred dollars. At a core, I really think that fields, since they are public fields, should be free to the public. So I just don't know if it's right that we're charging people to be, have these fees when other people don't have the fees. I would feel much more comfortable keeping the policy as it is, but just striking the whole sections about charging the fees. That's where my comfort level lies.
If, if I can say, I'm Denise Simeon, I'm also a commissioner with Diane. And when we had our special meeting, I asked Amy a lot of questions about, kind of like, let's go back to the beginning, why are we doing this, type of thing. So, and especially for the new council members. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but the history of this is that the city of South Lion, the city clerk used to, is that correct? Was in charge of scheduling all of these things. And so the taxpayers were, in essence, paying for her time. SLARA has three different members and the city of South Lion, as I understand it, asked them to take over this task. And she's estimating that it's about thirty hours a year she's spending on this. So part of that application fee, which, as I understand, for some of these, we're talking maybe two or three groups, are gonna have to pay twenty-five dollars. That's what we're talking about. So, and I understand what you're saying about this should be free, but we do have a new council commissioner who just started, who does all the scheduling for Northville. And I can query him some more. They not only, they, they have to pay for using the fields. So in a way, we saw this as a step to try to, you know, recoup the cost that she's spending for her time. This is a new, this is a new thing to have it, this responsibility go from the city to SLARA.
And I'd actually like to clarify that. Until two thousand and twelve, SLARA booked the fields for all of the organizations. At that time, the previous city clerk, Julie Zemke, took the responsibility back due to some conflict with one of the members at SLARA. It was brought in-house to the city of South Lion for two years. At that time, in two thousand and fourteen, Lisa asked Amy to take it back because SLARA is one of the major users and schedulers of the fields. And, but, besides the junior league and the major organizations, at that time, Amy said she would do so. So it is not something that the city of South Lion has done routinely and always done. It has only been for a period of about two years that the city did that.
And as a commissioner, I, moving forward, I think one of the things that I'd like to look at is neighboring communities and are we behind the times or are we current? Is this how other communities do this? Do they charge, you know, and I understand what you're saying too, that they should be free, all the taxpayers, you know, everybody's paying for these. But I, I, as a commissioner, I'd like to look at what are, you know, what is, what is the current policy and procedure? What, what do other communities do? Is everything free as South Lion grows and this becomes more and more?
I think I'd like to, I'd like to see that as well. I mean, that's part of what we've all been talking about is all the communities that are around us. Some of them are doing the same thing, some of them are doing a lot different. And maybe we're fine the way it is. I hate to see things held up, you know, due to, we don't have software or things of that nature. But I do like the idea of getting down that road and getting to that type of, because it's gonna make your job a lot easier. It's gonna make everybody's job a lot easier, especially if someone's trying to cancel. The money's a moot point, basically, you know? I mean, it's more of a matter of fact than just what you're doing with the, getting someone to commit to a field or something of that nature, you know? I've come from this, from way back where it's always been a problem. You know, I mean, we come from communities that were really, really kid-infused, children-infused. And, you know, those communities are starting to slow down and we're growing like crazy. And it's only gonna get worse. So we need to figure out a way to alleviate that problem upfront. May cause a little headache with a few people that don't want to pay the extra money or whatever, but it's not really that, is the real issue behind it. You know, so I'm all for technology a, a lot. But I don't want to see it hold up either of getting something accomplished, you know? So it's, that's just my thoughts on this.
Right, because purchasing, while investigating and purchasing, training and installing any software is going to take a while. And we, we still need something in the interim, the policy and then the application procedure.
Definitely would like to see what like our surrounding communities around us are doing though. I think that'd be a great idea. Just, might be a minor, minor pulling on a lot of people's charts, but I think it's just one of many that we need to look at, see if we're doing the right job or maybe we can do something better to help our residents.
One, one other, if I may speak of, is a sense of urgency in the sense that they can start scheduling, what, the first Monday of January?
I think in our initial projection for the application, we said the second Monday of January is when we'd like to make, to open for reservations or permit applications. So it, it's not anything that's going out in our brochure that we're meeting a publication date, but groups, I would like to give them at least a month in order to get their calendars ready to submit that application the second Monday of January. So we are getting close to that, to get them some initial information on these new policies and guidelines.
And we certainly could entertain looking at other communities next year. At this point, we couldn't for this.
I've got a couple of comments. The, I, I think it's a good idea that, obviously, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. If other people have made this solution, climbing onto what they've already gleaned is, is a good idea. A hundred dollars spread out over how many kids are participating in this program? I mean, if each family's paying seven cents extra to end up providing for the twenty-five bucks for each group, I don't think that that's something to even think about. And personally, I would rather see, if it's five hundred bucks, if it's a thousand dollars, two thousand bucks for software, I'd rather see that going in a programming than to, you've got a solution with a calendar. I mean, until that no longer performs, I'd rather see that money spent on actually kids getting the benefit of that money going into programming, so. But with that, I'll, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, the new park policy. Park use policy.
Does that include the motion?
Does that include the application as well?
Yes. I did want to make a comment though, really quick. Reviewing your language, I think you did a great job. I think you hit the nail on the head with certain language that comes forward, just kind of clarifying to people who are reading the application, who are interested in reserving the fields. I think it comes across nicely done. Also, I want to make the point that your time is valuable. We're not trying to just, you know, we're cognizant of the fact that you're putting in hours and, you know, we realize that your time is valuable. I also wanted to make the point that Councilwoman Maggie, good call on the updated technology. I think that's incredibly important. Even if it is a little bit more expensive, we should weigh out the pros and cons as to how that will help you. Look at neighboring communities, see what Northville, Plymouth, all the other communities are doing with their parks and their applications and things of that nature and how we can either get on the same playing field, get up to par, or if we are on par. Thank you.
Yes, I just had one more additional comment. This is kind of how I problem solve. And what I do is, I try to identify what is the problem. So the problem identified here was, you know, that the parks, an administrative fee for scheduling. And then I always look at what is the proposed solution. And I try to see if that solution, in fact, solves the problem. I, I don't think the seventy-five dollars is gonna solve your problem because human nature is what it is. There will always be people that are gonna want to change the fields. There's always gonna be incidences. So there has to be a certain level of tolerance for those unexpected events that occur when one has a job, as you do, you know, dealing with a lot of issues. So I just wanted to say, you know, I, I, my problem with, with what's going on here is that the solution does not solve the problem. That's why I tried to present some alternative solutions that may actually solve the problem. Additionally, on your application, it does talk about that applications can be submitted in person in the drop box or via fax similarly. I haven't used a fax in five years.
We wanted to avoid emails, we wanted to give another electronic option because emailed, there's a chance it may be bounced for a filter purpose. And if somebody says, "Well, I submitted this on January tenth, it's not my fault that you didn't get it." At least fax, you can get a confirmation page on there so that you know we received it.
You know, once again, there's a little bit of a disconnect between the technology that's occurring out there with most younger families who don't have faxes.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, once again, I am trying to impress upon, you know, delivery of services that are, you know, well welcomed, you know, by the taxpayer. The taxpayer is young, you're dealing in a young industry, you know, they have their, their kids. And I just don't know how many families that are out there today have...
Yeah, and actually, I think that's, that just reminds me because I, I, I don't have a fax. I don't, I don't think at work we even have capability to fax. So I would just ask that, I didn't catch that, so thank you for, it's curtsied while, for pointing that out, that if somebody does send an email, that that would be accepted. Because I know Oakland County, for example, if you submit election information or campaign finance, they accept it by email and that's perfectly acceptable to them. So I would hope that we'd, we'd have similar standards.
I think that's definitely something, and speaking just from my part, and I do want to reiterate that this is a Parks and Recreation Commission proposal that SLARA is just here to, to give input. So I want to make that clear from the start. Is, as we talked about with the email, I know there was a conversation specifically because it is, when you open up the timeline to accept the reservations, you're gonna get spammed at that first date. And our concern was if somebody did have a bounced email or they misspelled the email address, then they've got a copy that it was sent and somebody else was approved before then and then you open a can of worms there. But it's something definitely that the Parks and Rec Commission can discuss next year and look at ways to improve and to find another electronic version available to other people. Absolutely, in the future, that's something that can be discussed.
Do you see an awful lot of competing interests?
Yes.
Hitting it at the same time, do you? Okay.
Yes.
That's, that's an important, an important thing to know that, yeah, all right.
Okay, we have a motion on the table and we have a support. All in favor?
Aye.
Those against?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, non-related, I guess, but the technology is great, but there's one particular, I won't even mention who it is, there's one particular city that the technology is so good that it, it gets bogged down. that it, it gets bogged down. And it's getting very difficult to get information that you're trying to sign up for things with, and trying to get fields. And so I love the technology more than anybody, but I want, I want, I really want to make sure it doesn't bog down the system, nothing gets stuck, you know? I mean, it's kind of like Glenn says, a calendar is a calendar. As long as it's working, we can still use it, you know, and then bring the other stuff, bring the other technology up line once we find out what's good to use. So, that's great. Okay, we've got some new business. Appointment of the mayor pro tem.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, I do want to say, myself, I've, I've served as mayor pro tem, and I know that there's some level of connection that you have to have with the existing mayor. You have to be on the same page, you have to be, you have to be in sync. Maybe not necessarily agree, but you have to be, communicate. And I do know, perfect example, we have a gentleman that sits on city council, I feel would have that sync as mayor pro tem. Somebody with experience, somebody who's run the meetings before, who knows Robert's rules of orders, knows point of order, who's well-respected by the community. And for that reason, I'd like to nominate Mr. Harvey Waddell as the mayor pro tem.
I'll second that.
Yeah, any discussion?
You know, and, and I would also support that nomination. I think, as I was thinking about this over the weekend, you know, there's been a lot of change tonight with new council members. And, and I think that it, it would be nice to have someone that's just sort of a steady skipper of the ship, that sort of knows how to run a good meeting, that has respect of the individuals. And, and you know, and Mr. Waddell ran for mayor. I think he should be commended for putting his hat in the ring, and he went out there and he campaigned. I saw him at the polls. He was actively out there working it. And, and I think that this is an individual who has demonstrated that he has a commitment to the process, and I think that's pretty important. So I'd like to support Harvey Waddell also.
Any motion and support? All in favor of this, or any other comments?
Let me make the comment, please. I, I came here today expecting to nominate Mike Kramer for pro tem. And for all of the reasons cited above, Mike would make a very proficient pro tem. And I thank you for seconding the motion. My pleasure. Thank you.
All in support?
Aye.
Against?
Thank you.
Congrats, Harvey.
Manager's report. I have several comments this evening. First thing, I want to remind everyone that this Wednesday is Veterans Day, and I want to say a thank you to all of our U.S. veterans and serving soldiers, both stationed here and abroad, for everything that they have done for our country. But I also do want to remind everyone that City Hall is open on Veterans Day, and it is a normal working day for us. So feel free to stop by and see us. And if you're a veteran, let us know, and we will say thank you to you personally. I would like to express my thanks to Mayor Wallace, Councilwoman Kapowski, and Councilwoman Disson for the opportunity to work with them for the last eighteen months. It has been a great honor to work with them. And I want to say congratulations to Mayor Gallus, to Councilwoman Kurtzweil, and to Councilwoman Dadekis. I look forward to working with you all three over the next several years. And to Councilwoman Rizzi, I look forward to my continued opportunity to work with you over the next four years. Wanted to give you an update. I know everyone is keeping an eye on the situation over at Michigan Seamless Two with the boats. They are moving the boats out of there. None have been moved in in the past month, and they have been asked to expedite the removal of those boats as soon as possible. We visited them as recently as last Friday and visited Max Marina as well. There has also been a recent development at the Knolls Development with their waterlines. We finally had them re-chlorinate due to a problem that they'd had with their original chlorination of the waterlines. That was done last week. We were informed over the weekend that there was a problem, and they needed to cut the waterlines in order to put in the permanent box culverts for the bridge. So they are going to have to do some major repair work to the waterlines. And all of the chlorination work that has been done is going to have to be redone. That puts that development work behind further, but that is all costs buried by the development. But they continue to seem to cause themselves their own problems. But our field inspectors and construction inspectors are staying on top of that development and making sure that things go as smoothly as possible. Beyond that, I will try to make sure I set up arrangements to meet with each of the new council members that are elected, to make sure that we've got an opportunity to meet face-to-face. And I know you all have some great ideas for the community, and I'd like to hear them. And I look forward to working with you. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Comments from the council? I guess we'll start with Glenn.
Just a, a point of clarity, that the water main that was cut open, they've already got that back together. Everybody was aware of it. It's really a, a no-brainer. It's just, they've caused themselves a little bit more imposition, but it doesn't impact us, and it won't impact the quality of the water that'll be running through that system. So I wanted to thank the, the former members for, for their contributions over the last, well, I mean, every one of them has a different timeline, but, but they were always thinking of the best interests of the city, and I applaud them for their efforts. And congratulations to the, the new folks in here, and I'm looking forward to some big, bright things coming forward. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Councilwoman Mary?
Thank you, Glenn. I just wanted to say thank you to all the voters, everyone who came out to vote. And I am ecstatic to be up here and to help and contribute to the city. Thank you to all the previous people who sat here as well and contributed to the city. And happy Veterans Day on Wednesday. Thanks again.
Well, I want to say that I'm very excited to be here, sitting next to new faces on city council. I think that we can make some change for the city in the positive direction. Very excited. Congratulations, Mary, John, Maggie. Great to have you aboard. I also want to thank the voters who were so supportive, all the volunteers, campaign help. It was, couldn't have done it without you, so thank you. One other point, just wanted to touch upon, was that the city, we recently passed a roadway asset management plan, something that we needed. But the plan and the vision that we had from the previous city council called for a two-mill increase, something that would eventually, the proposal would be voted on next year. Now, me, me personally, I don't feel comfortable with two mills. In my opinion, that was a vision of the previous council. So I think that's something we need to reevaluate. If it takes study sessions or special meetings to come up with a new plan, so be it. But I definitely feel that that's something we need to revisit and just get a new plan on the table. Thank you.
Harvey?
Thank you. I also would like to thank the voters who came out, the folks who particularly voted for me, and were kind enough to say hello in the grocery stores or out, out on the street. And it was very humbling, really. I appreciated it. Veterans Day has been mentioned, is Wednesday, November eleventh. The VFW and the American Legion joins them at the Rock with the Flag over here in the city parking lot at eleven o'clock. And at eleven o'clock and eleven minutes in the morning, that's when the First World War ended with the armistice. They have a ceremony. It doesn't take very long, and if you're available and can get there, join us, please. Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I want to say congratulations to everyone that won. I hope that we'll be able to go forward and work peacefully in the next few years. Looking at this map, the Safe Routes to School, the proposal, brought to my attention something that maybe we should consider looking into. The bike trail on Nine Mile, you cannot cross it. I don't know what it is during, when traffic's pretty bad, it just takes forever to cross the bike trail from the north side to the south side and vice versa. I was wondering if there's any way we can look into maybe doing something like we have at the school crossing with the light, the activation light for the crossing, just to let people know that maybe somebody might want to cross the road and possibly slow down? Because I've actually seen people wait five minutes trying to cross that Nine Mile at that point. Just something we can look into. I don't have any idea on costs or anything like that, but just take a look at that. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. What you're referring to would be called a HOX signal, and that is something, I don't know if we could put it in this grant application because of the size, but that is a fundable grant eligible Safe Routes to School type option.
Perfect. Thank you.
Well, let's take something out of like the township's part.
Take a sidewalk.
Sorry.
Maggie?
I have a couple of things. First of all, Lynn, is there a copy of the city budget? I noticed that 2014, 15 was on the website, but not 15, 16.
Do you want it electronically or paper?
Paper would be fine.
Okay.
But hopefully, the electronic version will get on the website.
Yes.
Anyway. Also, periodically, I am going to highlight some of my experiences at area businesses, particularly when those businesses support the Arts and the Cultural Arts Commission of South Lyon. On Friday, November sixth, I attended my first-ever poetry reading at Third Monk Brewery Company in its right downtown South Lyon. And what a fantastic evening. A total of eight poets came from Lansing, from Jackson, Detroit, Northville, and we actually have two poets right here in South Lyon. These masters, and I, and I mean, they were masters of the, of their written craft, and they spoke with the most incredible command of the English language. The eight poets that were there, they were recipients of many creative rewards, awards that were presented to them by their peers, and just about every one of them was an accomplished author. To be in that room at, at Third Monk Brewery with this phenomenal creative talent that was well-recognized in the area, I just sat back and said, this is the new South Lyon. This is what South Lyon is going to be with the creative arts coming in and assisting with the revitalization of the downtown. So tonight, I would like to thank Jeff, the owner of Third Monk, for bringing his entrepreneurial spirit to South Lyon. More importantly, I would like to thank him for supporting the arts. And also, I would like to deeply thank two individuals, Josie Kearns and Joseph Matusek. They are a husband-and-wife poet team, and they are living in South Lyon. And I would like to thank them for having the vision to bring poetry to a whole new audience. If you weren't there and you missed it, it was standing room only for two hours, listening to this phenomenal poetry of these eight individuals. Third Monk was just packed all night, so I want to bring that. Last, I want to give my comments and my thank yous regarding the election. I would like to thank everyone who voted on November third. Whether you voted or not for me, what is important is that you participated in the democratic process. And yes, in a very, very huge way, your vote definitely counted. I will work as hard as I can to meet or exceed your expectations collectively. Collectively, we are going to succeed. We are creative, out-of-the-box, problem solvers who choose to succeed rather than fail. And I am filled with hope and enthusiasm and goodwill, and I want to thank each and every one of you for your votes of confidence. Thank you.
Thanks, Maggie. Okay, I guess I want to say thank you to everybody. I mean, this was a, I talked, I didn't really talk to Glenn about this, but we started a long time ago, moved to this community. Our children grew up. Little did we know, this is where we were going to be.
With me.
With Mary. And, sing with you. You know? I mean, kind of a little surreal, but I was, I came into this community twenty-five years ago and went to a planning commission just by accident, because I just moved in and wondered what was going on in that little building over there on the side that now Lloyd sits in. And was watching some developers and builders make comments and do some things. And I come from a building background, architectural background, as does Glenn. And I was sitting there wondering why they weren't doing certain things, and just brought it up to Jeff Potter, and who, you know, rest in peace, is such a great guy. I miss him. Yeah, he got me into this. Wish he could see me now, you know? And he said to me after it was over, he goes, wow, did you ever think about being on the planning commission? And I went, I don't know. You know? And on Monday, he brought me an application, and next week, I brought it to a meeting. The next thing I know, I was on the planning commission, and that was my start in city politics in South Lyon some way or another. And as we all got to know each other and watch this community grow and our kids grow up in it, you know, we've, we've had different wants and needs through the years. And I've watched Colonial Acres, you know, and watched the younger families come in, and there's a lot of needs that are being met, and there's a lot of needs that aren't. And the change, I think, was needed. And I don't think we have a different in philosophy with a group of people. We have a lot of strong personalities, but I think we're going to work out fine. And we should, you know, agree to disagree at times and do it on a very, very respectable business, business matter. And I think that's what the people wanted. And with that, I also want to thank Aaron Kapowski and Dev and Mayor Wallace for the years of dedication, especially from Mr. Wallace. And I, I remember coming in here and him wondering whether my son was playing football or not when he was seven years old, and I wondered what the heck was moving into. And this was such a football town. And, Mike knows that now.
Yes.
And so following a, a great line of shoes of a lot of people that have been here before us, and we've got some great history here in South Lyon that we don't want to blow it up. We want to build on that. And I think that the group that we have here right now is a pretty special group. At least I look at it being that way. And look forward to serving, at least for me, the next couple of years and making things much, much nicer and better for the people of South Lyon. I want to thank you. So with that, I guess that's the end of the regular meeting.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
All in support? All clear?
Aye.
Aye.